I'd like to call the meeting to order. Mrs. Burns, roll call, please.
Mr. Sullivan?
Present.
Mr. Parentana?
Present.
Mr. Allen?
Present.
Ms. Bowman is absent with prior notice. Ms. Boyle?
I'm here.
Mrs. Hollenbach?
Present.
Mr. Kovitz?
Here.
Mr. Marington?
Here.
Mr. Sorrello?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. The Board met in executive session this evening prior to this meeting to discuss matters of employment, issues related to labor relations, matters related to litigation, and safety and security issues. The district mission statement: The Nishamni community builds futures by empowering each child to become a productive citizen and a lifelong learner. Ms. Burns, any announcements?
No announcements.
Thank you. Mr. Jones, Superintendent's report?
Good evening, everyone. Some good information in the Superintendent's report this month, including the fact that our Maple Point students here now for the third consecutive for the past three years have been doing a wonderful Martin Luther King Day project, making what are called blessing bags. These bags are distributed to homeless and drug addicted in Bucks, Montgomery, and Philadelphia areas by a nonprofit group, Angels in Motion. They have many, many kids come on a day that's a day that they're off, but also some high school kids now are coming back who used to be Maple Point students here, and it's a nice community building activity here at Maple Point. Course information night for eight parents of eighth grade students is going to be held at the high school on February 13th. That's a Thursday evening. They're able to tour the high school from 6:00 to 6:30, and then a presentation at 6:30 in the auditorium. Presently, the high school administration is out prior to that date in the actual middle schools, meeting with students directly themselves, and so students will have some information in advance that this is a night for parents, but students can come along with them. There's a FAFSA night, that's the financial aid, free application for federal student aid. It can be a complicated application to complete, especially if it's your first time through the process, and so the school, high school, provides opportunity for families, parents, to work through that Wednesday, February 5th, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. in the media center. It's a free event, open to families of seniors who will plan to attend college for the upcoming school year. Highly recommend it. Our board meetings are on YouTube. I'm to remind you that that's new, so you can find that on our website. They still are broadcasted on the cable television, but you can find them probably easier and at your convenience if you go to our website and look underneath the board dropdown, you'll find the YouTube channel there. We have a new effort this year to provide earlier registration for our kindergarten families, families of kindergarten students coming up next year, and so thanks to Mr. Devlin and the crew in the pupil services. Rather than last year, where we had at this time 28 students registered for kindergarten because of an early push that started right before the holiday, we have nearly just under 400 students registered for next school year already. So that's going to be good for the system, good for our registration process to move those families through. It's a long process to get all 400. Actually, we're ultimately expecting somewhere in the area of 600-plus students in our kindergarten program, and so it's good for us to have that early effort, and I thank everybody who's been involved in that. The high school's musical production is coming, February Friday, nope, Thursday, February 6th, Friday the 7th, Saturday and Sunday, that same weekend, Matilda the Musical. Information is available at the high school website, as well as here in the Superintendent's report. Second Annual Sunset Challenge is the 5K race for our Stand Up Nishamni program. It's a effort to fight the epidemic of substance abuse by offering information on helpful resources and education for families and children in need. This is a fundraiser for that Stand Up Nishamni. It will take place in May, May 1st. You have time to get yourself in shape and ready. The Dream Team players are coming back. That's an NEF fundraiser activity. It's a fun one for, especially for elementary students, to have the teachers involved with the Dream Team and a basketball competition, and that, too, is a fundraiser. That's coming up in April, April 18th. Information's available on our website. We congratulate two of our art teachers, Terry O'Neil at the high school and Justin Bursk at Hoover Elementary. They've been chosen to participate in the Exhibition of Cross Pollination at the Tyler School of Art and Architecture in Temple University. This is where art teachers and one of their students are able to demonstrate and display their own artwork, and so our two students are Jackson Deluria from Hoover and Maya Murray from the high school, so the four of them will have artwork available there at Tyler. We congratulate all of them. Summer stock registration is now open for those students who are interested in participating this upcoming summer. Look for that registration online. And finally, Ryan Archidiakino is having his number retired from Villanova University. We congratulate Ryan. It's a great honor for him. He's had a great success, not just here, Villanova, and currently playing in the professional level of basketball, so Villanova is retiring his number at a ceremony February 12th, and so congratulations to Ryan. That's all I have at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Jones, can you take the presentation part?
I can. I have a little introduction first, and then I'm going to introduce to you a couple of young people who are here with us. This is National School Board Recognition Month. School boards play a unique role in championing and advocating for the quality education, and they take ownership with regard to governing their local public schools. As the elected representatives of the people of their local communities, they represent the community's voice and vision for public schools. Our school directors volunteer many hours each month to provide oversight for the schools in our community. The school board makes difficult decisions for the betterment of our students. They vote on multimillion-dollar projects, hire staff, help set board policy. They participate on committees to further exchange information in order to make educated decisions about the issues facing our schools and their decisions. Help inspire hope for a new generation by ensuring quality schools that allow students to reach their potential and embark on paths towards a successful future. These dedicated volunteers reside in our community. They're our friends, neighbors, and community leaders. Some are parents of children attending our schools, and others are engaged senior citizens dedicated to ensuring a better tomorrow. This month, we celebrate our elected school board members who diligently serve our students and our educational system, and I say all of that because January is the month that we set aside for that recognition, and we had a special request from some students and our art lead teacher, Dr. Potter, to come towards the podium today to say a few words. Hello, everybody.
So, thank you very much, Mr. Jones. You just took most of my speech away, so I appreciate that. I appreciate that. So, January is National Board, School Board Recognition Month, and the art department thought this was an excellent opportunity to show that we really appreciate all of the work that you do for us and for our students in this district. We understand that it is a tremendous amount of work, and it takes a lot of time and patience and commitment, so thank you. As a matter of fact, because of this hard work, last year, we were endorsed by the Pennsylvania Art Education Association as an outstanding visual arts community, and we were one in 60 across the state of Pennsylvania, so thank you very much. You helped us get there. We really appreciate it. So, we're very lucky to have some students with us this evening to present a collaborative piece from all of the artists across the district. We have Nikisha. She is a third-grade artist. Do you want to stand up? She's a third-grade artist from Walter Miller Elementary School, and Sienna and Aria are sixth-grade artists from Sandberg Middle School, and they would like to present a piece of artwork to you and say a few words. All right, you ready, girls? I go stand in the middle. All right, and we have it been out on.
Very nice. I should get a turn around and show the audience. That is phenomenal.
All right, so each school is represented in there, and I just wanted to give a quick plug for the district art show. The district art show is in May every year, and you are more than welcome to join us. It is a new time this year. It is going to go from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. to help fit in some other events that we have going on in the district, so we would love for you to join us. It is on May 20th and the 21st at the high school. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ladies, I really appreciate the fact that you came out. Before you fold that up, I'm going to suggest, why don't the three ladies, Dr. Potter, Dr. Stacy Potter is our new lead teacher in our art department, and I really do, it was a nice idea to come out here and thank the board like this, and board members, could you, we're going to get a picture taken of the entire thing. Students, can you hold that banner and let our board members stand with you, please, so that we can get one nice picture remembering this event? Thank you.
Which way are we facing?
You're going to face the audience. Face the audience. The board members will stand behind you.
Thank you for letting our art program reach the heights that it has reached and letting us really share our art and talent with you.
I'd just like to say, on behalf of the Nishamni students, thank you for allowing us a way to express ourselves through art.
Nikisha, Sierra, and Aria. I, Sienna.
Sienna.
You know, I can't read my own handwriting. Sienna. Thank you for coming out this evening. It's wonderful that you took the time. It's really important for our board members. They do a lot of work here in this room, and they don't always get a chance to see the students in action, and so whenever students come here, it's an extra special meeting, so this was extra special to have you come out and present the artwork here this evening. We're going to make sure that we display that here prominently, and I also tell students when they come out, this is always a good time of the meeting to get home to do homework, because the meeting just keeps going on and on sometimes, so.
Stay.
So, you're more than welcome to go at this time. Dr. Potter, thank you so much.
Thank you.
That brings us to the first public comment section, session. Mrs. Burns, anyone signed up? Please state your name, where you reside, and your occupation, please.
My name is Vera Noceto, and I reside in Cobalt Ridge, Levittown, PA, and I'm a library aide at Herbert Hoover Elementary, and I jotted a few things down. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Vera Noceto, and I'm here to address one of the appointments of support staff, namely, the library aide position at the high school. I have been a loyal, hard-working employee in the Shami School District for over 20 years, and specifically, for over 15 years at Herbert Hoover Elementary, working as a library aide. In early December, I applied for the full-time library aide position at the high school, and was interviewed thereafter December 16th. In my early years at Herbert Hoover, students checked out approximately 75,000 to 100,000 books, which were checked out and later checked in when returned and shelved in the library. At that time, occasionally, we had some volunteer parents that helped with shelving books. That is pretty much nonexistent for quite a number of years. The balance of the books were shelved by me, in addition to generating reports, repairs of books, and fully processing new books among a long list of duties. Due to the years of experience and the scope of duties that I have performed over the last 15 years as a library aide, I would in all likelihood be one of the most experienced library aides working in the Shami. Unfortunately, despite my loyalty and extensive experience, the appointment was given to someone with no experience whatsoever. Now, I had spoken to HR, and they were reluctant to tell me who the person was that got the job and what their capacity was prior to acquiring the job. According to the collective bargaining agreement entitled Article 9, Other Working Conditions, on page 29, Section 9-5.2, it states, "When a job vacancy occurs, the district will initially consider, but not necessarily award such position to applicants from within the bargaining unit." My question to you is, why an individual with my extensive experience would be overlooked for a job that clearly they are qualified for, after all the verbiage states initially consider? I would like to know what would be the criteria, if not the many years of experience I brought to the table during the interview? I'm hoping to get some clarity on what the priorities were for placement in this position, and I'd be more than willing to meet with somebody that can do just that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Since no one else has signed up, we'll move to, move on to the routine matters. I'd like to make a master motion to approve Item 2.01, the minutes, 2.02, treasurer's report, 2.03, check register and procurement card purchases, 2.04, budget transfers, 2.05 investments, and 2.06, exoneration. Can I get a second?
Second.
Second, by Mrs. Hollenbach. Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes eight to zero. Personnel administrative, Mr. Peter Tanna.
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. Section 3.01, Retirements, Resignations, End of Assignments. Now, therefore be it resolved that the Nishamni School Board of Directors hereby approves and accepts Joseph Jones III's resignation effective June 30th, 2020, at the close of business, and be it further resolved that the Board of School Directors pursuant to Article 10, Section 1073 of the Pennsylvania School Code as amended hereby approves and directs the school board solicitor to provide the required written notice to Joseph Jones III, District Superintendent, that the board intends to consider and begin the process to find his replacement and consider other candidates, in accordance with his resignation for appointment to the office of District Superintendent, beginning on July 1, 2020. I know. I will reread it. I am sorry. Section 3.01. Whereas the Board of School Directors has received a resignation from the District Superintendent, Joseph Jones III, with an effective date at the close of business at the end of the current contract, June 30th, 2020, and whereas the superintendent's current contract with the district and Article 10, Section 1073B, requires the Nishamni School Board of Directors to notify the District Superintendent that other candidates will be considered for his position, and whereas the Board of School Directors desires to immediately begin its search for Joseph Jones III's replacement as superintendent, now therefore be it resolved that the Nishamni Board of School Directors hereby approves and accepts Joseph Jones III's resignation effective June 30th, 2020, at the close of business, and be it further resolved that the Board of School Directors pursuant to Article 10, Section 1073 of the Pennsylvania School Code as amended hereby approves and directs the school board solicitor to provide the required written notice to Joseph Jones III, District Superintendent, that the board intends to consider and begin the process to find his replacement and consider other candidates, in accordance with his resignation for appointment to the office of District Superintendent, beginning on July 1, 2020.
Make him read it again.
Can I get a second? Second, by Mr. Kovitz. Comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes eight to zero. Personnel certificated, like to make a master motion to approve Item 4.01, Retirement, Resignations, End of Assignments, 4.02, Leaves of Absence, 4.03, Revised Leaves of Absence, 4.04, Revised Returns from Leave, 4.05, Appointments, 4.06, Ancillary Appointments, 4.07, Co-Curricular Appointments, 4.08, Co-Curricular Resignations, 4.09, Substitute Rates of Pay. Can I get a second?
Second.
Comments, questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes eight to zero. Personnel support, Mrs. Hollenbach?
I'd like to make a motion to approve 5.01, Retirements, Resignations, End of Assignments, 5.02, Leaves of Absence, 5.03, Revised Returns from Leave, 5.04, Appointments, 5.05, Co-Curricular Resignations, 5.06, Co-Curricular Appointments, and 5.07, Ancillary Appointments.
Can I get a second? Second, by Mrs. Boyle. Comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's pass eight to zero. Educational development, Mrs. Boyle?
I'd like to make a motion to approve 6.01, Confidential Settlement Agreements, 6.02, Overnight Trips, 6.03, Out-of-District Placements, 6.04, Bucks County Technical High School Joint Board, and 6.05, a Pre-K Counts Partnership Agreement.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Second, by Mrs. Hollenbach. Comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's pass eight to zero. Business operations, Mrs. Hollenbach, can you pull 7.02 out?
I'd like to make a motion to approve 7.01, SOS Employee Contracted Services, and 7.03, Tax Assessment Appeal.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Second, by Mr. Allen. Comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's pass eight to zero.
I'd like to make a motion for 7.02, Senovia Solutions Student Ridership Software, and Here Comes the Bus Application. Whereas, an agreement is made between the Shami School District and Senovia Solutions as a vendor for student ridership software provider, and whereas contractor will provide GPS tracking system on district buses, and Here Comes the Bus Application to assist parents and students regarding bus arrival times, and whereas the term of the agreement will be from July 1, 2020, through June 30, 2025, at a rate of approximately $6,500 per month. Now, therefore be it resolved that the Nishamni Board of School Directors hereby approves Senovia Solutions to be the provider of the student ridership software and the Here Comes the Bus Application under the terms and conditions of the agreement pending final review of the district solicitor.
Can I get a second? Second, by Mr. Allen. Comments or questions, but first, Mr. Irwin, can you explain what this is?
Yes, Mr. Sullivan. The district is, the administration is very excited about this opportunity to provide the parents and the students of the Shami, this application which will provide real-time information about bus information, so that a child will be provided a swipe card. When they get on the bus, they'll swipe on, and when they get off the bus, they'll swipe on, so the parents will have real-time information about their students, where they're at, as well as the application that comes with it, so that students and parents will be notified when the bus is coming to the stop with notification. For instance, if you need, you know, if you're a stay-at-home mom, you need two or three minutes notification that your son or daughter's, young son or daughter's coming to the bus stop, and you need to be able to get, you know, two minutes to get out there, you can design it so that you have that opportunity to do that. Likewise, if you have to, you know, if you're at work and you need to get in your car and need 15 minutes for that notification, you can, you can design the application that way as well. So, it's all about student safety and parent convenience, and we believe that this will provide our bus drivers and substitute drivers a turn-by-turn direction that will be mounted to the dashboard, so that we don't have situations where substitute drivers don't know where the next stop is, or don't know who's going to get on that, at that stop. This will all be, you know, digitally provided to the driver as well. So, the bus driver's going to know what the expectations are for at that stop, who's going to get on, and who's to get off, and whether that student, who's to get off is on the bus or not, so that we don't have any situation where children are left on a bus unattended, or, you know, they forget to get off. Sometimes you find it hard to believe that sometimes a very young student, you know, might fall asleep on the back of the bus after a long day, and so, you know, this will prompt the driver to make sure that the child, that it's going to know the child's on the bus, and that the expectation is the child's going to get off at this stop. We have some other issues that we have to work out administratively with the principals. Clearly, the expectations for K to 4 will be different than the expectations for 5 through 8, as well as the expectations through 9 through 12, so we're working on that administratively. We expect it to be about eight weeks implementation to get the devices on the bus, and during that eight weeks, we're going to work this out so that we have clear, concise understanding for both the students, the administration, and parents of what to expect, but we do believe that we're going to roll it out K to 4 first, and then middle school, and then high school, and then this contract allows for the actual payments to begin next fiscal year, so that by the time we start next school next year, we're fully implemented, and everybody understands what the expectations are and how this application will work.
Thank you, Mr. Irwin. Any other questions? Okay.
I just want to add quickly that the, you know, in the beginning of the school year, you know, we had a very difficult time in our transportation department, and the transportation department has worked with the administration. We've got most of those issues smoothed out, but we did have a large amount. In fact, a couple times, people came to the podium to speak about a better way the district communicating with them on the transportation issue. Just want you to know, we took this seriously, and Mr. Irwin, and especially Mr. Jones, worked to find what they believe is a solution, an investment in our transportation system, an investment in our, our community, to bring, how did Adam turn it, the 21st century to the, to the bus system. So, we're, we're hoping this is going to really provide the, the access that parents have been asking for, and also the accountability that we need to provide to our community. So, I think it's a great idea, and I'm in favor of this, this motion.
There's a second on the floor, so. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes eight to zero. That brings us to other board business. I have some other board business. As everyone up at the, on the board is aware, and most of the administration is aware, effective as of the adjournment of the meeting tonight, I'll be stepping down. as of the adjournment of the meeting tonight, I'll be stepping down as board president. The commitments of my business are actually just been too great, and I don't have the time to put into the president's position that it requires, so I think it's best if I step down, and that's what I'm going to do. I will be staying on the board, but I will be stepping down as board president. Mr. Torrenti?
Yes, Mr. Sullivan, as you said, beginning at the end of tonight's meeting, there will be a vacancy in the position of board president. My recommendation at this point is to solicit nominations to be your successor as president to the board, effective at the conclusion of tonight's meeting. To some points of order with respect to the election process, all nominations must be seconded, and a motion to close nominations must be seconded and approved by the board. Okay? Thereafter, if there's one nomination, you will ask for a motion to elect whoever that person is as president, effective at the end of the meeting. If there is more than one candidate nominated, then the board secretary will be asked to conduct a roll call. Five votes must be cast in favor of the candidate, because there's only eight people in attendance tonight. If there is a, if there's more than two candidates, and the voting must continue until one person receives those five votes. So with that said, if you want to solicit nominations as board president.
At this point, I will solicit nominations to replace me as board president.
I'd like to nominate Stephen Pirtano for president.
That would be with an effective, effective at the end of the meeting tonight.
Correct. Second by Mr. Allen. Okay? All right. All in favor?
We have to close.
Close it. Any other nominations? He had a motion to close it.
Motion to close nominations.
Motion to close nominations?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I'd like to abstain.
All right, so.
Seven zero, closed nominations.
Are you abstaining to close the nominations, or abstaining from the vote?
I'm abstaining from the vote.
Okay, because right now, it was just a...
It was that, the motion that was on the table, it was just a motion to close nominations.
I'm good with that.
Okay.
I just wanted clarification.
Okay. So nominations are now closed? Now let's...
So it would be a motion to elect Mr. Pirtano as president, effective at the end of the meeting.
I'd like to make a motion to elect Mr. Pirtano, effective at the close of the meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions.
Me.
The candidate.
Do I have to take a roll call?
No, but there does need to be a roll call, though, because there was an abstention.
Okay.
Yes is in favor?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mrs. Bowman? She's... Ms. Boyle?
Yes.
Mr. Sorillo?
Yes.
Mrs. Hollenbeck?
Yes.
Mr. Kovitz?
Abstain.
Mr. Merrington?
Yes.
Mr. Pirtano?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Seven yes, zero no, and one abstain.
Mr. Pirtano, you've been elected president, so at this point, your position by operation of law as vice president is now vacant, so the same process needs to be taken for board vice president, so a solicitation of nominations is needed at this point.
I'd like to take a solicitation for nominations for the vice president's position. Can I get a nomination?
I'd have an each eye, Alan.
Second.
A second for Mr. Allen. Any other nominations? I'd like to make a motion to close nominations.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes eight to zero.
You need a motion to elect him now.
Yeah, exactly. We need a motion to elect Mr. Allen as board president? Board vice president?
Effective at the end of the meeting.
Effective at the end of this meeting? All in favor? I need a second. Yeah, a second.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes eight to zero.
Oh, you didn't ask for abstentions?
I didn't.
Okay. I'm abstaining.
Do another roll call. Roll call vote on that, if required.
Mr. Allen?
Yes. Should have said no.
Ms. Booth?
Yes.
Mr. F, or, Mrs. Hollenbeck?
Yes.
Mr. Kovitz?
Abstain.
Mr. Merrington?
Yes.
Mr. Pirtano?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mr. Sorillo?
Yes.
Seven yes, zero no, one abstain.
Mr. Torrenti, as acting school president, am I allowed to inquire as to the reason for the abstention?
You may.
Mr. Kovitz, I'd like to know the reason for the abstentions.
No comment on it at this time.
Is that...
There's clarity.
There was a matter during public comment that was raised by Mrs. Nocido, I'm just directing the board that it doesn't, the matter does involve an employment matter, and I'm suggesting that the board do not make any comment about that at tonight's meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Torrenti. That brings us to the second public comment period. Please approach the podium if you wish to speak. Identify yourself, your occupation, and where you live. Okay. That brings us to board comment.
Could I jump in with just, with two quick points? I don't typically make comment here. But one is, I did want to highlight for those present that there was action made to raise our substitute teacher per diem stipend, and the importance there is, because this is a very competitive market, the Shamani School District is looking to do all it can to be the choice district for those who are doing substitute teaching. And so, it's an effort on our part. We had a lot of conversations administratively, a lot of conversations with our staff about all the different things that we can do to help increase the percentage fill rate that we have when we have absences. So this is an effort on the part of the board to step forward, take a serious effort on that front, and we really do appreciate that effort. Thank you very much. And then, secondly, my resignation was part of the reading a couple of times here this evening, and those of you, those of you who work in the district know, I did send notice out to everybody, but if you're not in the district and not on our district email, I'll just simply let you know, I've been doing school administration work for thirty-one years, a few more years in the field of education, and my last child of the four went off to college last year, and it stopped making sense for me. There's a lot of night commitment here. We talked about how much commitment there is for you as board members, there's a lot for us as administrators as well, and I'm not retiring, I'm looking to go back to the classroom to do some work that way. I'm excited about that, and I do thank the board. I'm hopeful that you choose to wait till June when I leave to have your comments, otherwise you'll just keep making comments tonight and in June. But I did want to let anybody who didn't know where I was headed for my next phase, that that was my goal, that's what I'm looking forward to, and I thank everybody here in the Shamani. It's been a great four years, almost four years. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Mr. Allen?
I just want to thank you, Marty, for all the time you've put in. I was lucky enough to be here under Scott, many a conversation. When I came on the board, you and I discussed various directions and things we wanted to emphasize, number one, our facility planning, putting that committee together, making it a permanent committee. I just want to thank you for all that you've done, district, and I understand completely the time that it would have taken up from your business, get that. I, for one, am so glad to have had the opportunity to work with you as president, and even more pleased that you're not going anywhere. Thank you.
I just want to compliment the students and staff that participated in the MLK here at Maple Point. I myself has worked, and my family have worked with Angels in Motion. It's a really great organization that tries to help people that are really at the bottom of society. I hate to say it that way, but, you know, these people that, you know, are fighting, you know, drug addiction, just, you know, need somebody sometimes to recognize that they're still part of ours, they're still part of our society. Sometimes that helping hand, that food bag that they give out, is like giving somebody a hundred dollars. So, you know, it's organizations like this that try to help people that the rest of society sometimes pushes aside, and they're just a great organization, and I'm glad that they were recognized here, and all the people came out to help. It's just a really great thing. Our Dr. Potter and our art students that came out, that was a fabulous thing they did for us. It was really nice, and they gave a really nice presentation, and other than that, I want to thank the board for having the confidence in me to give me the privilege of being the president of the board. I can't say enough about Marty and the leadership that he's provided over his time. I've been lucky enough, like John mentioned, to work under three board presidents, started on the board with Rich Webb, and then Scott, and then Marty, and each of them, in their own way, have made an indelible mark on this district, and really worked tirelessly to advance this district, and I can't say enough for, you know, what you've done here, and my goal is just to, you know, maintain that standard. And as someone else asked me, don't screw it up. So, saying that, I just want to say, thanks, thank you for your service, and the service of the administration support that we get, that is really important to us here, so, thank you.
I want to...
I have to say this.
You had to know.
I had to say, I just want everybody to look at this, and I'm going to embarrass her, but this is okay. My daughter is in her last year at Temple University, going to be graduating in May. This is her first-grade dictionary book that, who's in attendance tonight, her first-grade teacher found when she was cleaning out her drawers, and thought enough of me, my family, and my daughter to return this to me. So I know your name has changed, I know her as Mr. McNona, I know she has a different name now. That was an unbelievably beautiful thing, and thank you so much for thinking of me and my family, because, thank you very much.
I wanted to thank Marty for his years as president, and congratulations, I think, to Mr. Allen and Mr. Pirtano for taking on the roles of president and vice president, and Marty, make sure that that timer has batteries and, you know, it works properly for the timer before you hand it over to him, okay? Thank you.
We should be so lucky.
I'd like, yeah, well, first of all, I'd like to thank Marty for all of his stability, you know, and all the trauma that we've been through, and he was very strong in getting us through all this. And, second, I would like to say that sometimes we don't always agree with each other as board members, but in the end, I think we voted for experience and knowledge.
Yeah, I gotta put my two cents in, too. I'd like to thank Marty. I, you know, I'm relatively new to this board as well, and I, you know, I think we all watched Marty grow into this position as president, and I think he's done a really good job up here, and he's, I don't know where you're going to sit next, but you're going to be missed up there, and of course, congratulations. Yeah, I don't know. But, you know, congratulations both to Steve and John as well. You know, we're still in good hands. Everything will continue as, you know, in the right direction, I think.
It'll just last longer.
Yeah, just take longer.
Yeah, I mean, we will have to start putting curfews on meetings, I'm sure, starting at the next meeting, but as I said, in other board business, it wasn't an easy decision, but it was a decision that was right for myself, my family, and for this board, because I really don't have the time to put it in anymore into what the position requires, and, you know, the good thing is that it's, you know, I have a lot of business commitments going on, and that's what feeds my family. I mean, the check that we receive of his board members is helpful, but...
We got a racist double last week.
So when I adjourned the meeting tonight, as my ten-year-old said to me, when I said I was going to step down as president, she said, "Oh, great, now you're just going to be a plain old board member." So, real soon, I will be just a plain old board member. So with that being said, if no one else has any comments, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I have to ask opposed? No. Meeting's adjourned.[1761.63]